This week?
Yeah, just in.
Alright. Wow, I got a pretty wicked thunder if you've ever seen it. That's crazy.
I heard your brother did.
Oh, he did. It really wasn't me. Mine's more of just a kind of a lot.
Football ball?
You never responded to my opening game?
Yeah.
Uh, test where I said you saw that guy that threw the smallest.
I never, I never actually watched it. I think I saw it. I never got, I never got to see it. I'll have to go back and look at it though.
Any time up to that.
Sorry, yeah, that's my fault.
I was like, I can pull.
It wasn't a guarantee, but.
Cross to a certain G consider.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, it's.
Yeah, of course.
You know what I mean? So it's ten days a night. It's not like it's four fourteen.
Does anybody else want to sit up here with us to kind of balance out the board at all or? No?
No, so, so.
You're more than welcome to. Maria, you want to, over here? You want to sit next to me over here so we're like, we're looked balanced?
Hold on, I gotta try to cast.
Does that change? Do you get an extra pitch count numbers?
I think some of each one.
Uh.
I suppose.
Which?
I suppose.
Which wifi do I have to be on to cast?
No.
I, I need to know which wifi to be on to cast. Touchdown. Alright, so. Do, are they gonna record this right?
Yeah, and I think you should make note of that. I can then tell you how.
Is it being recorded at home?
No, it's on our call. So when you're ready.
Everybody ready here?
Is everybody administrative team ready?
So we can record? Alright, good evening, everyone. Welcome. This is the School District of Prescott Board of Education Regular Meeting at our new time. We have the agenda. I'll call the agenda order. Subject, Section nineteen eighty-three Wisconsin statutes. First item up is to adopt the agenda. Rick, is there any changes?
Yes, the administration would like to flip flop in discussion. The next work session or meeting to be the last item in information discussion. To allow Mike White to go first. So it was duly noted. It was posted. All we're asking is that energy efficiency lighting would go first and we would move item A, which is next meeting, to be discussed after what is currently noted as D.
As D?
Yeah.
So A goes to pass D?
Correct.
Okay.
Otherwise, there's no other changes.
Alright. Anything else, Board? Otherwise, we can take a motion.
I move to set the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That carries. I have three pledges of allegiance. Pat, would you lead us?
Sure.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, just, just a call to everybody's attention. This is not being livestreamed tonight. We have some technical gaps, but it is being report, it is being recorded, so it will be available on the school district website at some point, I assume.
Yes, we believe it'll be posted no later than June twenty-first.
Okay. Alright, so we'll move to item four, recognition of visitors. Is there anybody in the audience that would care to be recognized? Going once, twice? We'll move on. Alright, thank you. Move to item five, good news. And we'll go to the admin team.
We'll start with the administrative team. Our congratulations to Shay who successfully graduated and is already planning her move through Des Moines up into Nebraska Omaha. So congratulations to Shay and to our graduating class of two thousand and twenty-two. I am going to ask the administrative team to come up and present the good news. As they do that, you can kind of see behind me. There were a lot of magical events that occurred with the fifth grade kindergarten and our senior class graduations. Also, we had our recognition for staff that had five, ten, and all the way up to thirty years of work experience within the Prescott Public Schools and also our four retirees. And we wish them nothing but the best in the next chapter of their life. And so first up, we have the principal for high school, Josh Figgy.
Yeah, good evening. First, a huge congratulations to our graduating class of two thousand and twenty-two. Since our last board meeting, they went through their commencement ceremony and it was fun to see a lot of them kind of reach the culmination of their pre-secondary career. And then to our other classes, ending out a really good year and ending very strongly. And then kicking off for us on June sixth, our summer school. So we have Speed and Strength going on. We have about a hundred and twenty students currently participating in Speed and Strength throughout the day, throughout five sessions. Driver's Ed with three of our teachers, a large cohort there, summer geometry, summer credit recovery, and then about sixty students in online classes. So we've seen a successful first two weeks for the high school for summer school. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Michael?
Well, small ski intermediate school. Just again, congratulations to our graduating fifth grade class and wish them success at the middle school level. Want to shout out to Kyle Schmidt, our high school CTE teacher. He was awarded another workforce development grant. He'd be getting some more equipment in our CTE area. As Josh said, summer school has kicked off. We have approximately eight hundred students across the district taking part in summer school at this time. We're operating out of three sites, the elementary, the intermediate, and the high school. And Ms. Dusek is taking on that administrative role this year, so congratulations to her in getting things off smoothly. And I'm looking forward to a little hunter's education next week as well.
Mark Kinyway, Director of Student Services, just wanted to talk a little bit about some exciting opportunities into next year. We've talked a lot this year about mental health and supports for students experiencing mental health needs. Next year, we're excited to be adding using some grants money, a third day of family mean services that kind of shared between our high school and middle school, which will really allow an extra group of students to receive some of those supports that they need. Students who have barriers to getting those services outside of our walls. So that's really good news going into next year. And then just, I guess finally, I just want to thank the, the school board, Dr. Spicuzza, Mr. Holney, back when he hired me ten years ago. This is my last school board meeting. I will be moving on to River Falls next year. But I just can't thank you guys enough for all the support you give to special ed and student services, myself, my staff. It's been an honor to, to serve Prescott over the last ten years and I'm very sad to be going, but excited at the same time. So just wanted to say that.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Rick Montreal, Dean of Students. It's kind of a tough one to follow. Good news at the end of year at the high school, not just graduation, but the second before the last day, we had the seniors go to Glen Park for the year-end picnic. The weather didn't cooperate that well. The food did. It was outstanding and I think they had a good time. Looking forward to summer. Good news would be excited about working on some things after the challenges of this past year to address things for next year. And Mr. Figgy and I have already started that process, so that is definitely good news. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Andrew?
Good evening. Andrew Caudill, Activities Director. We wrapped up a really successful year in activities. Some of the highlights, we had a successful state-run forensics, state competitors, the solo ensemble, great concerts and fine art performances, tremendous drama performances, we had a national competitor, a National History Day, a successful athletic season that produced five conference championships, six regional championships, one sectional championship, and two state championships, multiple individuals going to state, and other awards that are probably too, too many to, to cover. And finally, Prescott was the winner of the first annual Middle Border Conference Cup Challenge. So we have the cup in the office that we will hold on to for years while we defend it. And finally, I just want to thank and congratulate our athletics coaches and student athletes for a really tremendous year fundraising. Since July one, the athletics teams and program has raised about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars this year. So it was a great year all around. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Rick, any updates?
Yes, I have some good news behind me. This is a follow-up in, as we went through as administrative team. You can see that there's a lot of work that happens internally, but also externally, trying to partner with different organizations to bring in additional revenue and support. The incredible programming from academics to mental health within our public schools. We also recently just secured for Career and Tech Ed additional dollars that'll be invested into the high school. We just received another four thousand dollars for early literacy training that'll be coming to the district. And behind me, we will be sending out a note to all our staff and to our families. We have received one point five positions with, for a reading tutor at Malone Elementary through the AmeriCorps. We have already secured the one point oh position. This is a highly evidence-based intervention program. We will have this sent out to all of our staff and families and posted. It is a paid position. We, the one that is still pending is a twenty-five hour week position. The stipends are six hundred and fifty dollars every two weeks. And there's also federal loan forgiveness for other debt that people may have. We're really excited about this partnership. It will match and blend very well with our interventions that the board has supported, and we couldn't be happier. Wanted to give you an update with regards to where we are financially, with regards to our rating call. We did meet with Moody's, Quarles and Brady, and Baird earlier in the month. We were reaffirmed as a double A three. That gives us, it affirms where we've been in a financial situation. Does put us in a prime lending basis. On June thirteenth, we did close the bond advance note for fifteen million and I was just texted before this meeting began from Baird. There is an expectation that we'll sell the bonds tomorrow if interest rates are good. So at the conclusion of that, I'll be able to update you that we have secured that for the referendum and investing in our infrastructure. Lastly, I know that there are two, there is a significant agenda item later today. I believe it is a historic opportunity to relaunch Prescott Public Schools and differentiate the way that we give teachers and invest in their time so that we can better improve the outcomes of our students academically, physically, mental, their mental health, and socially emotionally. I look forward to the discussion. It's been going on since December and we'll be presenting the results of the survey that was done in response to board questions and also the communities. So, thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to school business. First item is the consent agenda. We have the May eighteen regular board minutes, the board checks and finance, non-licensed personnel retirement, resignation, employment, and change of non-licensed staff, and the Alice Training Journal for the MIS middle school and high school. Anything that the board would like to remove from the consent?
No.
Alright, I will adopt the consent agenda. Are there any objections? Alright, the consent agenda is adopted. We'll move on to item B, consider retirement, resignation, and new hires of licensed staff. And we'll go right to resignations here since there's no retirements.
Alright, let me just pull up the agenda so that we can cast that for the people that will be watching at home. And there it is. Alright, so with regards to resignations, we do have three individuals, obviously Mark, Special Ed Director, Lindsay Charles, a special education teacher at the high school, and Leah Isles, our fifth grade teacher at the intermediate.
Or questions or comments?
No.
Alright, can take a motion?
I move to approve all resignations.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, yeah, okay.
I just wanted to publicly thank Mark Kinyway.
Yep.
He is the longest-tenured administrator on the group. He has been just remarkable to work with, appreciate all the services that he has brought and the competency he has, he has brought to that department as it's evolved. I'm very happy that he's only going down the street and as we look to find a successor for him, I'm also very appreciative of the way that he's collaborated and I know that it's a tight network. And so Mark, with great gratitude, thank you. It's bittersweet. I told you I'd try not to cry, so I'll make it. And, but I wish you the best.
Mark was one of Roger's best hires. I've been, it's been a pleasure working with him for the last ten years, so good luck and we'll miss you. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Alright, item three on this.
Yes, yeah, new hires. So, and the middle school band, I hope I do this well, Jonathan. It's Jonathan Vygut, Vygut, and I believe that is the correct pronunciation. Courtney Westburg for grade four, Jennifer, Jennifer Roll, a special ed EBD teacher at Malone, Tanya Maravick for middle school special education, Camille Marston, who will be a PE teacher, and Britta Ernst, a special education teacher for middle school.
Tanya, you have any questions or comments on any of these?
Uh, no questions. I do like, normally we ask about how many people applied and how many interviews, and that's right in here. So it looks like it, you know, we didn't have a ton of applicants for any of the positions really, so I'm glad we were able to hire and find people and I'm excited for bringing them on board.
Pat?
Uh, no questions, Rick. Maybe an unfair question. How many, how many new hires do we have left to go?
Oh, gosh, I, I hate to throw out a guess. I know that we have three special education positions open. Admin assistants at the high school. We have a fifth grade teacher and special education and will be soon posting for a district office position.
Thank you.
Not bad. Alright, we'll take a motion.
I move to approve all new hires.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. Move to item C, Consider Activity Director Proposals for Approval.
Okay, good evening. Andrew Caudill, Activities Director. Apologize for all the agenda items tonight. The next two I have grouped into one presentation, so I'm happy just to go through the whole thing, take them both at once, whatever you prefer. So we have two overnight trip requests for, for this summer, one for girls golf, one for football. I'll go into the girls golf overnight requests first. Girls golf will use sanctioned WIA contact days, which will allow the coaching staff to work directly with our Prescott girls golf program. They are going to go over to Hartford, Wisconsin, in the girls' match play championship, July twenty-fourth through twenty-seventh, which is a major event on the Wisconsin Junior PGA. So it's a great opportunity for them to bond as a team and compete prior to their season starting. The expenses are being paid by the players minus transportation, which will be provided by the district, the use of a suburban. So I'm happy to take any questions on girls golf.
Tanya, any questions?
Um, did they do a similar trip? Was it last year?
Um, they did an overnight trip during the regular season last year. I'm not sure if they did something during the summer.
Great, thank you.
Nope, no questions. We're good.
Okay, and on the football side, same thing. They use WIA contact days as a part of that week. They're going to go to Holman High School, July nineteenth and twentieth, spend the night. They'll practice and compete with other schools, which are Holman and Rice Lake. Expenses will be paid for by the football club, which is just food. Lodging will be free because they'll be camping at Holman High School and they'll use a bus to get down there. They did the same thing last summer, but they did it here where Holman and Rice Lake attended. So this year, they will be going to Holman. So happy to, any questions?
Any questions?
No questions.
Tanya?
No questions.
Is there a minimum like for ratio for chaperone? Is there chaperones or is it just?
The coaches will be going.
Just the coaches, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright. No other questions. I think we can take these one at a time. Start with the golf.
I move to approve girls golf overnight trip.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That one carries.
I move to approve our sea football overnight trip.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That one carries. Next one.
So next, I have a proposed agreement between Prescott and Under Armour and BSN for an apparel contract. Something that we've been working on for the past couple months, so we're excited to be able to present this to you in advance of next year. I'll go through, I'll just kind of start at the beginning, kind of go through the agreement and feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Biggest part of the agreement that I'm most excited about is the discounts we'll get on retail for coaches apparel, shoes, uniforms, and different equipment. So on the apparel side and uniforms, you'll get thirty-five percent off, thirty percent off custom uniforms, fifteen percent off different athletic products, and ten percent off branded products. So that will be a big cost saver for, for us. We'll be required, both, all of our varsity teams to wear Under Armour uniforms and the coaches are required to wear Under Armour. This is something that we'll transition into. However, we, most of our teams are already in Under Armour. One exception that we received is on football. The reason is, is football, we are investing in Ripon jerseys so that we don't really have to replace football jerseys again because they don't replace their designs, which will allow football to keep the same design. So when seniors will have the opportunity to purchase their uniforms, that money will be used to replace those uniforms. Other schools in the area have done that and it's a way to get football uniforms off the books and the Under Armour was willing to write that in as an exception. We will get some rebate opportunities. So if we spend so much money, then we'll have rebate opportunities through BSN and Under Armour. One thing to note is that part of the agreement, the varsity programs will use a team shop. The team shop is not exclusive, which means other team shops can exist. Anything purchased from those team shops will have discounted Under Armour apparel and those items will count towards our rebate amount, which will help us hit our, our goal. Footwear will not be required by athletes, however, will be made available to them at a thirty percent off discount. We will also be, something I'm really excited about, will also be enrolled in Under Armour's Women of Will program. It is the only national sponsorship of high school female athletics in the country. So Prescott will be one of four schools, I believe, in Wisconsin that will be enrolled in this program. So it'll be a pioneer in our state to celebrate our women's athletics programs. These programs will have access to an exclusive Women of Will logo on apparel, exclusive Women of Will armor fuse uniform designs, Women, Women of Will webinars for professional development. There's a Women of Will graduation award. There's called Women of Will Days or WOW Days, which will be an opportunity for us to essentially throw a party around our, some of our women's athletics programs and events sponsored by Under Armour. And it'll be an opportunity for us to emphasize, promote, and celebrate our women's athletics programs. We will also get some branding materials, media backdrop, tablecloths, custom banners valued at fifteen hundred dollars as a part of this agreement. We'll receive twenty-five hundred dollars in a one-time signing bonus that can be used for retail items. There'll also be a sideline store, which will have items sold at retail price through Under Armour and we'll get ten percent royalty on that. We'll get championship incentives, state championship T-shirts, Coach of the Year. We'll get a bonus. It's something I was able to add in and they will retroactively give us the five hundred dollar retail dollars for winning the Middle Border Conference Cup Challenge. Few other things to note for the program, for our equipment. BSN will be given an opportunity to price all equipment needs to get the best price out there. If it's not something they can fulfill within forty-eight hours, then we can go get the price from anybody else that we would like. And then they will have a preferred provider on branding in the event that we want to do that. So it'll be a five-year agreement and something that we're excited about. I'd like to thank Nick Johnson, Chad Sale, Emily Calabrese, who served on a head coach's working group with me to kind of hammer out the fine tune of the details. And then it's something we propose to our head coaches as a whole and it's something that overall we're, we're pretty excited about. So happy to answer any questions that you have.
Pat, any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple. Andrew, did all of the current head coaches get a chance to review? Was the agreement unanimous?
Yeah.
You know, were there any, you know, disagreements?
Yeah, some of the disagreements that we had, we were able to iron out with the working group. This definitely, this final product is not where we started. Some of those things centered around the first right of refuse on equipment is a good example. We were not willing to do that just because we were concerned about supply chain, we were concerned about timeliness of, of responses. So it's something that we're able to iron out through the agreement. So that's where we landed on. They'll have the opportunity to price our equipment. They'll have forty-eight hours to essentially respond to our requests. And if they're not able to do so, then we're able to go, to go forward. Most of our teams are already in Under Armour, so the transition's pretty seamless. Teams that aren't in Under Armour, we have the chance through our own rotations to get them there. So we're not required to just all of a sudden go on a, on a spending spree. The two, the teams that do not have Under Armour right now, so softball, they're looking at fundraising for some uniforms next year. Baseball doing the same. So we'll get them taken care of. Track and field wrestling, we'll wait till their rotations come up unless they would like to fundraise. The nice thing about the agreement is the, the discount. And so thirty-five percent, thirty percent depending on the uniform they pick is a pretty, pretty big number. And so it will allow us to get good deals on uniforms. Next year, girls basketball is already in the rotation, so they'll have new uniforms. Football is getting new uniforms, but they're exempt from the, from the agreement. Their coaches are not exempt, just the, the uniforms. And the agreement only covers competitions, does not cover personal time practices. It only covers competition.
Um, maybe an unpopular comment. It's, it sounds like there's going to be some, some clubs fundraising for new uniforms out of, out of rotational sequence, which is too bad because, I mean, we just, we put such a stress, I think, on the community in terms of fundraising for athletics. But two, two programs, we're looking at doing that, is that right?
Yeah, softball and baseball have talked about doing it. Both programs are really set up pretty good through fundraising now. They probably could just do it today if they wanted to, not necessarily have to fundraise for it. They'll go through their usual fundraising process. Both programs had a very good year fundraising.
Um, I think you already spoke to this, but if there's supply issues, so was that, was that what you, what you just talked about, the first right of refusal? So if, whatever, the team needs X and Under Armour can't deliver, they have forty-eight hours to either meet our requested delivery date or price point? Is that, is that right?
Yeah, that's on the equipment. So let's say basketballs or softballs. On the uniform side, we're looking pretty good because we do order uniforms plenty in advance to get them. BSN is Under Armour's main provider of uniforms, so they have a good stockpile. Assuming this agreement gets approved tomorrow, then those head coaches will get, get with them to start getting designs done and getting, getting price points.
Okay. I don't think this is a problem. What's, what's the risk of breaking this? I mean, what's, what's the, what's the liability here to the district if, you know, I'm sure there's clauses in here somewhere that if we're not happy, there's a five-year term, which doesn't sound too long, but that's a long time. You know, what are, what are our off-ramps?
So the, the agreement lists that either party can terminate the agreement in the event of the other party's material breach of this agreement. If the other party fails to cure the breach within thirty days, they'll receive a written notice. And talking with them, really their big thing is just, are we purchasing the uniforms through them? Are we wearing uniforms? One other thing I, I failed to mention is that girls golf does get a partial exemption only because Under Armour's girls golf offerings. only because Under Armour's, um, girls' golf offerings aren't as strong as their boys' golf offering. So they're, they have to get one set in Under Armour, the rest they can go and get whatever they want. But girls' golf, they also are in a process where they like keeping their stuff, so they essentially buy new stuff every year. And so, um, Coach Sale has, has good relationships out in that community, so he gets really good deals for them. And then their, their booster club, um, covers those things and they just keep everything.
Rick, is this something that needs to get run past legal before it's signed and executed? Again, it's a five-year term, it sure doesn't look that risky, but.
Yeah. I think, um, it, we kind of modeled it after with some of the other districts. I'm happy to run it by our legal before just final signing. If, uh, it could get approved for my signature with, uh, the lawyer's review.
Let's, if, yeah.
Yeah.
It might be worth doing it. Uh, last question for me is, um, we do have a local business, uh, who does a lot of work. Um, I don't know how heavily into the, uh, high school or, or school-sponsored uniform supply they work, but how does this affect them? Um, how does it not, are they aware of it? Um, any feedback there?
Yeah, Kim French has been involved in the process. Um, I met with her today to go over it, go over it. This is why we, when we negotiate the team stores, that the team stores cannot be exclusive. And there's no requirement on what has to be purchased by team stores, it will be made available. And also everything else will be made available. Um, other opportunities that, that have been created is Under Armour has agreed to supply us with plain Under Armour gear on those shops. Uh, plain Under Armour gear will arrive faster, then people can choose to get it embroidered by River City Stitch, which is additional business, something that, that we talked about today that we're going to explore further as we get into this, is the possibility of River City Stitch, um, through us, essentially getting some Under Armour gear for, for them. Um, so that, that's definitely, um, an opportunity. Other opportunities that exist are, um, our school store could utilize this as well. Um, so it was very important to me that, um, she was in the know. And so I went through this with her, and, um, we have open communication if something comes up that she wants to discuss. Um, for me, the biggest part of this agreement was really uniforms because the cost of uniforms continue to go up. We've had a few instances recently to where teams just weren't getting enough uniforms. This will lower those costs. The other stuff is just kind of add-ons, um, and so uniforms are not something that they have supplied us with in the past. And they don't usually do a lot of name brand, um, product. And so if anything, it'll be another opportunity for people to utilize, but not necessarily something that will replace something that already exists.
Thank you.
Tanya?
Well, Pat had so many great questions. Um, the local businesses were one of my big questions. Um, and I just wanted to clarify that this is, um, at the high school level only. This is not currently. Is there a thought of moving, expanding to middle school within the next five-year agreement? Or is this always a high school type program?
It's a high school program because that's all that they'll require. However, we can always buy uniforms and equipment through this for those programs. PCR could utilize this for those programs. The requirement is that the varsity programs will wear Under Armour, and with the understanding that as time goes on and uniforms are bought and things are rotated through, then there'll be more Under Armour being displayed, but it's really geared towards varsity.
Okay. Uh, that, that's my only question.
No, that was a great question. I was going to ask more PCR if that's something, it's not in the contract, but it sounds like they can take advantage of it.
Yeah, because we can buy through them, as long as we buy through them, then yes. We go through BSN on equipment, then we'll get the fifteen percent off or the ten percent off because the district's buying.
And it counts towards that rebate then?
Correct, just like the team shops, anything that's purchased through the agreement will go towards our, our rebate amounts.
And my only other question, I, I'm going to get really nitpicky or trivial here, but it's about, uh, so, uh, going, going with a provider like Under Armour, you get the color palette that is consistent, right? So we ran into an issue this year with baseball, I'm just going to call it out right now, the, the colors were not the school colors. Is there any, so obviously when we, when we start purchasing uniforms for baseball, they'll, they'll match up with the color scheme that we typically go with. Is there any thought on what we're going to do with those uniforms? Is there any buyback there that you have opportunities to work through?
No, probably not. Um, so the baseball uniforms are Nike, and that was what I was told was the closest thing to our color that they had. I think we can all agree that that is, uh, not particularly close. Um, Under Armour, most of our teams are already in Under Armour, so essentially be consistent across the board. Uh, the boys' basketball, Cardinal red uniforms, those are Under Armour. The girls' basketball are Under Armour, uh, volleyball's Under Armour. So you'll, we'll see consistency, and they have a Cardinal red. And so it's, it's, it might not be exact, but it's, it's a Cardinal red and it's, it's very close.
Not the St. Louis Cardinal red, but a different Cardinal red, or Prescott Cardinal red?
The, yeah, Under Armour Cardinal red, um, you've seen those, those uniforms are across.
Okay. Um, any other questions, board? All right, I think we're good. Andrew, nice job. Anybody want to make a motion on this one? Pat, do you want to amend it? If you want to include legal counsel, and there are any motion, we can do that too.
I, I don't know if it's necessary.
Um, you want me to add it?
No, I think we just talked about it. I think it's a good thing to run in front of it and make due diligence.
I move to approve Under Armour exclusivity agreement for our uniforms.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries. All right, we'll move on to the consider hiring girls' varsity basketball head coach.
Okay, last one on this item. Um, today I am going to, uh, recommend the hiring of Owen Hamilton as our girls' basketball head coach. Um, introducing Owen, uh, he's an associate accountant at CBRE, uh, but most here will know him from his, uh, basketball days here in Prescott. Uh, been a coach for us in the girls' program, played for us and some of our best teams, uh, back a number of years ago. Played at Northern Illinois University, played at the University of Wisconsin. Uh, one of the most decorated athletes we've had, uh, come through Prescott, somebody who's, um, done a great job for us. Um, I asked Owen, uh, what his vision is for our, for our program, and he said that his vision is to have immediate success while having a fun, engaging, team-centered environment. This environment will carry over into the future years for sustained success. Um, I'm going to skip a slide because I think it's important just to hit the process before I hit why Owen because it ties. Uh, we had seventeen, um, applicants, I conducted four interviews. Um, we had three finalists that I put in front of five, um, incoming seniors on the, in the program. And I just have to say that these five students were impressive isn't even, doesn't even do it justice on the work that they did, the preparation, um, the, the opportunity they had to, to interview who would end up being their, their next coach, something that I thought was, was awesome. They spent six hours with us, um, going through each candidate. And so in reviewing those three and all of the things that, that were a part of the process, one thing was clear, all three brought tremendous basketball expertise. Uh, but what Owen, he separated himself in the process, uh, through his intangibles, um, his relationship with Prescott, his successful playing career, not only a playing career, but a successful playing career that he can relate to our, to our student athletes. Um, he's been there, done that, things that he can relate to, that they can communicate with him. And something that, that I've really been emphasizing, um, is our relationship between player and, and coach. And something that, that Owen just nailed through the process are these four things. He models the correct behavior and the right way of doing things. He'll inspire our students to give their best each and every day in all things. He'll challenge our students to reach new heights of success, and then he'll encourage our students through their own growth journey. That with his, um, expertise in basketball and his ability to connect with our current student, um, separated him in the process and makes him who I believe is the, the best candidate, um, going forward, which is why, um, he is being, uh, presented here, uh, this evening. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Tanya, any questions?
Um, yeah, just process again a little bit. Um, I guess first of all, I, this isn't really, for me, any question on whether or not Owen has the skills and the knowledge, and like, I'm sure he'll, he'll be great, and I, I trust all that. So, um, it's, it's more process-type questions. So were there other adults that were part of the interview committee besides you, or is it just kids?
So I interviewed the first time around with, um, the standard process that I have, and then I wanted to see how they interacted with current student athletes in a, in a unique environment. So I was in there with them, we discussed all the questions, uh, different topics they wanted to hit on, and then they conducted the, the same, the same process with, um, each candidate.
And in this case, these are girls that are basketball players, or are they from like, other leadership areas within our?
They were current basketball players.
And was he, he had already been their coach then? Because I guess what I'm getting at is I'm a little concerned, like, that relationship is already established and there and stuff. And so, um, I appreciate, I super appreciate six hours of these girls putting their time in and working hard and stuff, but I also feel like there's already kind of a bias towards knowing a person and what they're like coaching that is, um, I think, hard for young adults and kids to separate. Um, and so I, I guess I would have liked to have seen that there were more adults and more, um, um, maybe other coaches we've had in the past, or whatever that looks like, and not girls that are making these decisions, but.
Yeah, they weren't necessarily making the decision. I will say that they all had, um, strengths and weaknesses and positives or concerns for, for every single candidate. And that information I just piled up to, um, review each candidate and, um, their viability.
Those were my only comments, questions?
Yeah. I'm going to, I'm going to qualify all this by, so Owen, Owen's a really good family friend. And, and I'm very excited for his opportunity, and anything that I'm going to comment on has nothing to do with Owen as a person, his, his basketball knowledge, his skills or abilities. Um, we need to have had another administrator or coach in that, in that interview process. I'm not comfortable with that process. Um, so I think, I think that that was a miss. Um, I think the one thing that, that the slides also don't, having been, having coached for a lot of years at the high school level, one of the biggest issues that I think gets overlooked by an incoming coach is the ability to build a staff, um, especially when you're dealing with volunteers or, um, very marginally paid assistant positions, if paid at all. And so, um, I would like to hear about, because I think the number one risk to Owen or anybody else coming into the position is how are they going to get the, uh, assistance, the leadership to build a staff? And that is a massive recruiting effort. So I'd like to understand a little bit of how we as an athletic department, our district, are going to support, um, Owen in that, in that endeavor.
Yeah, that's something that, that, um, I talked with him about at length. And, um, we talked about the number of coaches, uh, diversity in our coaching staff, and, um, he has a lot of good, a lot of good feelers out there, nothing that he can really finalize, um, until after, after today. But it's something that, um, I feel good about, something that he wants to work on so that when he's able to do his contact days later in the summer, that he has, uh, at least the majority of his staff together to where they can be a part of, of those contact days. So it's something that, um, we've already spoken about at length.
So, so what are the things we're going to do to support him? So he's got some ideas. Um, I would, I would strongly encourage some check-in by, by X day, and I know today is an important step. He needs today to happen. I would encourage that we have some, uh, and I'm sure you do, Andrew, but some check-in days by X amount of days. If we don't have, if he doesn't have X amount of candidates for, you know, for a spot, I think, you know, elevation to the issue needs to happen and, and additional support needs to be given.
So what he'll do is he'll, he'll gather his, um, if he's got any candidates, we'll do background checks. And then if it's other candidates that he wants to get filled, that he wants help on, then we'll post, and then we'll advertise for those, uh, those positions. Um, we do background checks right away so that we're, we're clear that that person can coach, even though the season is, is, uh, down the line, and then they'll have time to do their WYA, um, tasks in the, in the fall.
But that's something you're committed to helping with, right? It's, Owen's not.
Yeah, I've, I've helped all of our head coaches do that, so.
Okay.
Anything else, Pat?
Um, no, I'm, I mean, obviously I hope, you know, the greatest success to Owen, you know, I'm excited for him and the opportunity, but no other, no other questions.
I'm going to jump back to just process quick and then I'll have a couple of comments here. Um, so there was, there were seventeen applicants for interviews. What is that, what is that, that interview pool, the four, out of the four candidates? What did that, like, the demographic look like, were they internal, external?
Um, the other three were all external, um, male. Uh, the seventeen applicants, we had three, three female applicants, um, qualifications, um, weren't, weren't really in the ballpark of, of the top four. Uh, all have coached, um, some head coaching experience, um, and the, the other three were from different corners of the state.
Okay, out of the seventeen, was there any other internals?
Uh, no.
So Owen was the only internal?
Owen was the only intern.
Okay. I, I'm just going to, I'm not going to belabor the point here. I know you guys kind of hit the nail on the head. Um, I think Owen is going to be great. He, he, he's, he's young, but we've hired a lot of young coaches that have had success, uh, in, in this, uh, district. Um, so he just needs a chance. And I, I hundred percent agree with, with both Tanya and Pat that getting him the support he needs, um, building out that staff is, is absolutely critical. And I don't want to drag this on any longer than it has to because he needs to get started on that. He probably already has started on it. Um, but I, I think that's like step number one, getting, you know, getting the support around him. Um, he just, I, I'm sure he'll, I, I know Owen, he surrounds himself with, with smart people, so hopefully we can get, uh, smart people around him to help him, uh, be successful in that role and, and then just, um, help him out throughout the, throughout the, the year to get him, to get him going here. So, um, anything else from you guys? Uh, I, I, I will comment on the process as well. I think, I, I guess I would have liked to have seen maybe some, some other coaches involved in the process that are current, just to get, just to get a, a gut check, um, from, from some of the other coaches that maybe have experience in the district and, uh, maybe even in the, in the basketball program. Something to think about, Andrew, it's your call, this is, this is your decision, and, and I, I'm not, I think we, as a, as a board, will obviously support those decisions that you come to us with. Uh, those are just some suggestions, I think, that we have, and, you know, just take it for what it's worth, I guess, so. Uh, anything else, guys, and we can take a vote here?
Yeah, I guess I know that it's totally your decision, and I, and I support this overall. I just, I want to be clear, like, moving forward in the future, I don't know if I would support another decision without other adults making decisions too. I think it's too much responsibility to put on kids. And so, I mean, I'm not going to belabor the, the point and all that stuff now, but just so I'm clear, I, I do feel like other adults, and part of it's to take the pressure off of you too, right? It's not just you making the decisions, there's other people supporting you. Um, and I, and I love bringing kids in, but, um, I think in this situation, it was maybe not the best call here, so, yeah. Anyways, um, I move to approve, uh, the hiring of Owen Hamilton as a girls' varsity basketball head coach.
A second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And thank you, Andrew, for all the work that you're doing here. There's a lot on your plate, so appreciate your hard work. Uh, we'll move on to the item D choir trip for twenty twenty-three. And our choir director, Brittany Camerah, if you don't mind joining, come on down. It's like the Price is Right. Just tell me when to push forward. So this is the trip to Las Vegas that we discussed last month?
Yeah. I, I don't have anything else to present.
You haven't rethought about taking a bunch of kids to Las Vegas?
No, we're good.
You just want to open it, let's just open it up for questions. Tanya, do you have any questions for, for Brittany here?
No, I don't have any questions.
Pat?
Uh, I don't, no.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we've discussed this, so we don't want to waste any, any more of your time, but.
Maybe one question, and I just wondered because of like fuel prices and stuff. Is there any chance, um, that the cost of this would change? Because if pricing and, I know plane and travel is pretty expensive these days?
I think there was a possibility for a small change because of fuel, but. I think there was a possibility for a small change because of fuel, but I would have to reread the contract. I don't think it was a huge change.
It's a ways away yet, so hopefully.
But there is a contract that we have, right?
Yeah, I have.
That locks in.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
I have to get back to it.
I got it up here. I move to approve PHS choir trip twenty twenty-three to Las Vegas.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Owen, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That one carries. Thank you, Brittany. Item E milk contract.
All right, on an annual basis, we come to you to present kind of the different contracts the last few years because of the federal programs and things like that. And needing to have updates every three years. We are coming to you, milk prices are all over the board, they are going up. We are recommending that we stay with Hastings Creamery LLC. You can see that the prices are broken out as of May twenty-second. We have the different options. This is the similar product that we've had. It does cover Saint Joe's Parish as well because we provide the oversight of that food service. Other than the prices going up, everything else will stay. And Maggie Schmidt would like us to approve this so she can begin to build her budget for next year. Tanya?
Yeah, I, I know the prices are going up, but can you remind me of how much they're going up? I did, I don't know if I missed that on here, but.
Yeah, I, I am unprepared.
Okay, that's.
Forty-nine cents a carton is what the new price will be, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah. And what the changes, I don't have that at the fingertips.
Um, and then I can't remember how many years ago it was, but our kids did the blind milk test. And this was what was chosen from the kids?
Specifically for chocolate.
Yep, so, so I'm happy to stay with it for the kids. I, I would imagine this is pretty comparable to everybody else. And, and did we do that comparison and kind of look at what everybody else was offering?
Yeah, so there are a couple dilemmas that we have, both on, many of the producers are not taking on new vendors because they just have limited. This was the best option that we had based on the field. We look at next year as an opportunity, maybe that hopefully the economy and supply chain is a little bit more regular. The one thing that I also wanted to just put in on the table is that the federal program is set to sunset on June thirtieth. There's been some talk about the federal legislation continuing, the, the covering the costs for families. We have not heard that, therefore we have been unable to work with the state on setting food prices for lunch programming. So Maggie will be coming back in July or August, once all of that has shaken out. And so milk and food prices will be based on what will be charged to families.
I didn't have any other questions. Thank you.
Pat?
No, I think, you know, first of all, thank you Maggie for the, she sent over that email, which I thought was really helpful. Tanya, I think to answer your question, no price increase since twenty sixteen. So it's going from a buck fifty a carton, it's an increase of, of, it's like five cents a carton.
Thank you.
Completely makes sense. I have no questions.
All right, take a motion.
Thanks, Pat. Thanks Maggie. I know you're out there.
I move to approve the milk contract with Hastings Creamery for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Owen, favor? Aye. Opposed? That one carries. Item F SRO contract.
Yes, I'm bringing forward to you, we had sent this previously. Sue Gertis, our new finance coordinator, Eric, I have been meeting with the new business director for the city, Matt Wolfe, and also Chief Michaels. We have looked at kind of the program. Our contract is up for renewal. We had a great partnership with the Prescott Police Department as well as the individual who is identified as our SRO, Chris Stewart. He has been, his time predominantly has been up at the high school, although it was initially set up to kind of cover middle school, high school. And then obviously being in the district, if something came up, he's available. He does work a lot of our events and so anytime we have carnivals, senior lock-ins, activities at night. And what we were running into is that when we came to the agreement, I think the agreement really did favor the Prescott Public Schools. We covered his annual hourly rate, but the benefits side and the rest of the contract fell to the city. So they did come back. What they are looking at is basically the contract does go up to doubles, kind of what we have been paying slightly under fourteen thousand, and it will increase to twenty-six thousand to cover both our portion of the benefits and his hours. I still think that the program is worthwhile. I think that in these times, specifically with some of the challenges that we've had behaviorally and also just the kind of different perspective that he can add when we're working with students, coaching our staff and administration on interviewing, that it's a program that we should continue. I would say that at this point, we have the dollars within the budget in that as soon as we put this in, we then organize around it. And I don't think we have enough information to say that we would not support this or move forward. So it is an increase. It is gonna go up, you know, from, I think it was fourteen hundred a month to twenty-eight hundred a month for the ten months that he's working with us.
Pat, any questions?
First of all, a comment. I mean, obviously it's an increase. It's a tough time to take on additional increases. I would agree that this is, this is money well spent. Rick, I believe and I think, and I think you said as much, right, is that the, the program has been, has been great. I think Officer Stewart has been great. I think, I'm, I'm hoping administration would shake their head and agree that, that this has been a great program. One thing I don't see in here, and I don't remember when we first negotiated this contract, do we have the ability to, you know, if, if, if Chris were to leave, do something else? Do we have the ability to co-interview or co-hire or how does, how does that work?
Yeah, so Chief Michaels has been really upfront and we know that it's not only the skill, but also it's the goodness of fit, the personality. And so we did get to sit in on the interviews and participate when Chris was selected. And we have that working agreement that moving forward, that would be the case if Chris were to move on. I haven't heard of anything that would lead us to believe that that's gonna change. But we are, we have a really good, open relationship and I have no concern that if Chris was reassigned to, to a different position within the work, police force, that we wouldn't be at that table.
Maybe an unfair question and too bad he wasn't here, but does, does, does Chris believe that it's been, it's been a good partnership? It's been a good thing. He's been happy. He's enjoyed the work?
Yeah, so Chris is, you know, he's a very accessible individual. And he's, every time I turn around, he's either in a principal's office or walking through the hallways. He does come down to the district office oftentimes. And a lot of it has to do with just the many hats that he plays, being a parent, having a senior and being part of the senior lock-in. So we do discuss a little bit about kind of his role, if he's enjoying it, how he really believes that it's about the relationship first. And trying to make sure that he's also coaching up and teaching. So we are an educational learning organization. He really tries to help students rethink the acts that they've done, how they could have made a decision that would have led to a better outcome. And when better to do that in your formative years than doing it when you're twenty-one and becomes maybe a little bit more significant. So I think it's been a really good partnership on both sides.
Thank you. I'm good.
Tanya?
Yeah, a couple of questions and, and some comments. I agree, it has been great seeing him, not only in our buildings, but just kind of part of the community. I see him at almost every big event, you know, basketball games, football games, softball games. I mean, he's kind of just always there and I think that just kind of piggybacks on the relationship that kids have with them as well as families and, and that trust level and stuff like that. So he's a great fit for us. The county I work in, we have an SRO, and the county I work in, there's a limit for how many years in a row that somebody can serve as an SRO before they have to go back. And I think it's probably related to field duty and all that kind of stuff. And I was just wondering, it doesn't sound like that's the case here, but that would be something to think about if there's a limit before we do have to start looking for somebody else or, or what, how that works out. I would say that the principals I work with and the role that I'm in, SROs are a wonderful add to buildings. I mean, for safety of staff or safety of kids, for safety of community, it's a great role. And the other thing really is just having somebody know our buildings like he does in that law enforcement area in case there ever is a, a major safety need or threat need, I think is something that's just really invaluable. And so, you know, I, I fully support continuing to, to fund this. I think it makes complete sense that we'd be funding half of this or half of, I think, you know, his benefits and stuff like that. So I, I look forward to continuing with him and, and just this relationship with our police department.
Rick, was there any other changes to the contract?
Uh, none.
None, okay. So we're good there? Yeah, I mean, I, I think it goes without saying, Officer Stewart has done a great job and we're more than happy to keep him with us. So I won't, I won't belabor that either. So we can take a motion.
I move to approve the SRO contract.
All second.
We have a motion in a second. Owen, favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That one carries. Move on to item H. Consider the date changed for the July meeting.
No, I think it's limited.
Yeah, we have a limited.
Oh, it was on the bottom here.
Yep.
Um, sorry about that. Item G, consider proposed elimination of limited flex spending.
So this is a provision that is currently in the handbook. As we presented last month, there is currently no one in the flex spending account for the last two years. We were asked to come back to you and provide you with, when does the plan end? The reason that we're asking to end the plan is primarily threefold. First, we do pay for the, based on the number of employees that we have to keep this account open and no one is using it. So we would believe that it would be worth our while not to be paying for something. The renewal date is set up for September first of twenty twenty-two. Our contract would be then pulled there because anybody, if any residual dollars are in there, they would continue to be in there until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two because it's based on a calendar year. You had asked about the specific dates and that's how it plays out. In today's, based on our health plan, we provide an HSA and you really can't have both. Some people use it for childcare, but that is also now deductible through and taken care of on child credits and things like that on the tax return. So at this point, it's our recommendation to kind of take it off and close something that is no longer really a benefit or used within the district.
Tanya?
No questions. If people aren't using it, we shouldn't be paying for it, just my thought.
Pat, we had good discussion last night. No questions.
All right, we can take a motion.
I move to approve elimination of the limited flexible spending benefits starting on nine and one twenty twenty-two.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Owen, favor? Aye. Opposed? That carries. We are now on item H, change date for July meeting consideration.
Yeah, so the next, as you know, we meet at six PM on the third Wednesday of every month. We've been notified by the board president that there is a conflict with the seven twenty date and there's a proposal to move it to another Wednesday, either the week prior or the week following. So either the July twelfth or the twenty-seventh.
So it's the thirteenth.
The thirteenth or the twenty-seventh?
Thirteenth. If my math is correct, yes, we do that just to make sure that you are paying attention throughout this night.
Uh, is there any date that works? Well, first of all, let's just go around the board here. Anybody have any conflicts with either of those two dates?
I have a conflict at the twenty-seventh. I can do the thirteenth.
Okay. Tanya?
Um, I'm just double checking and I don't think I have any conflict.
I did, I did talk to Steve and I think he can make the thirteenth work possibly as a hybrid. So I didn't get a chance to talk to Vicky. So I think if we can go with the thirteenth, Rick, if that works for you. I know it probably puts a little bit more on your guys' plate to try to get stuff ready. Maria's over there just shaking her head.
Yeah, can we turn it around there?
My god dang, you're not gonna work overtime. All right, let's, let's shoot for the thirteenth.
Okay.
Um, do we need a motion on that?
Do we need to talk about five or six? That's in, that's in here as well.
Yeah, you should specify the time.
Yep. I mean, should we just go with six?
Let's assume we'll go with six, right?
Yeah, that's what we kind of agreed to.
Uh, I move to approve date for July's meeting as July thirteenth at six o'clock PM.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Owen, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Sorry, Maria. Item I, consider second readings in the Ola policies.
So I'll pull these up. The first one is controversial issues in the classroom. You'll see what's available to you and up on the screen. Following kind of with Niola is, there isn't major changes other than there was the opportunity for us to select when a staff member would be able to weigh in and give their own opinion. This is something that we talked at length under the first adoption. And we did go that we didn't want our teachers to be robotic and not being able to at least share if directly asked. They do not have to share their personal belief or opinion. But if they wanted to, we thought that that would be okay. Within this new writing, it did recommend that it would be, that teachers could only provide comment at the end of a discussion. I suggested that that would put administration in a very difficult position of he said, she said, if there was something that was controversial, which is what this policy is about. And so I would rather keep it with regards to that teachers follow the process. It should only be talked about in the content domain in which they're teaching. They should defer to social studies topics, not in math. And then if they are in social studies and they're talking about a controversial topic, that they have the ability to weigh in as long as they truly identify that it is their personal opinion. Given the state of a lot of educational controversy, I do wanna say that within our district, we have not been faced with a lot of complaints that have come to this level. We have had a few around English Language Arts or textbooks that are selected. And I think they've always been worked out in a very collaborative way in a partnership either through the family, the students, teacher and administration. So I don't think there's anything to be too concerned about, but I think it's more of just an updating of this, given some of the controversies that are currently out there on a national platform.
Tanya, any questions on this one?
No, I don't. We've looked at it before. We've approved it in the past, so I don't have any questions.
Pat?
No questions.
You can move on to the second one. Are you on?
Yep, yep, that's fair. Sorry, it's, uh, they were, we're trying to become more efficient, so we're bundling these together. This one is, obviously comes out of either having to teach hybrid synchronous through virtual classrooms. All this is putting in place for student conduct, is that the student handbook is in place anytime that we're teaching virtually. And so the types of behaviors that are listed and expected are also expected when we're doing virtual teaching. So nothing has changed since the last time we had that conversation. And we're moving for it to be approved so it can be processed. I'm sorry, question?
What did I do? I can't hear.
There's an emergency. Check your phone.
Check your phone.
Okay. Are we allowed to, is something, okay. So we would move to have this approved tonight so we can get this processed and in place for August.
Any questions on this one?
I don't have any questions. No.
No, no questions. Rather than what I say.
All right, can you take a motion?
I move to approve the second reading of new Neola policies.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, Owen, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries, uh, before we move on to item I, I do need to take a recess here, if that's okay, so.
Yep.
Five or ten minutes. I gotta make a quick phone call, so, thank you.